This July 5th, 2022, and we will start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records show that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Stone. And do we have anyone from the public to be recognized today? I keep looking over here for Joe.
Behind the scenes, we do not have any more schedule.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, and we have nothing from the Assessors Office. And we will start then with Justin Wolf, 911 OEM with a grant award.
Well, it looks like it's going to be signed in.
Yeah. Yeah. Justin, I think he was six months. The grant awareness that you signed for was a grant. We applied for the supplemental 2020 grant for around $15,000 just to grant a word document saying that we'll accept the grant. For about $15,000.
At this time, I make a motion to the office.
There's the results, man.
That we authorize the President to sign this grant to the performance award.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept and authorize the President to sign this performance grant award in the amount of $15,000. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. And I need to sign.
Right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure. It's funny, the copy you made has where you should sign.
Right, right. Like the sticky.
Yeah, the sticky.
To have it written seven for July. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Ash.
Next up, we have Joe LaRue, our Facilities Manager, with a report.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. So basically, the first thing on this this morning is on the courthouse seat and reporting Keystone has got the bid, will open the bid, and they accepted the bid. Now, if I may have the Commission President sign the contract for Keystone to seal on the point, the courthouse, and the work will start in September, and it'll be done by November. And they are a very good company. And also, moving on at the animal shelter, the floor, the epoxy on the floor is looking wonderful. The folks are doing a different section every weekend, and we are trying to stay ahead. We're trying to stay ahead of them to help them to get stuff out of the way and then put stuff back, and it's doing great. We will start on the AC upgrade next week. The equipment's in, we're waiting on the ductwork. We will go and get it this week, and we'll start next week, which works out perfect with the way the epoxy folks are going. We can put the furnace, the floor will be done. So everything is looking good over there. And of course, we're going to work orders as they come in, staying up with all that. And other than that, things seem to be doing really good.
What's the insulation at the shelter doing?
It is doing well. The place that when they put the new metal that they closed in the garage floor that was had no insulation has been insulated. And of course, the wall and grill put up and the drywall put up. So it's already much better on that that section. Has not been finished, and the stuff that they can wash has not been installed. But at least the studs and insulation drawables have made that area much cooler for the summer. So as soon as next week starts and we get the side AC again, that side, and then it'll be really, you know, it'll be really nice. So I think I think everything is falling right into place. We're progressing right along, and so I think it's going to, I think it's going to turn out really nice.
Sorry, at this time, I'm moving to approve the contract and authorize the President to sign.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the contract with Keystone for the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Grant and authorize the President to sign. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you all so very much. If you all have no objections, I'll get back to work.
All right, thank you. Have a great day.
You have a great day. Thanks, Joe.
All right, we are now at 9:35 on the thing, and that never happens. And we have an update or a new employee hire for the County Clerk's Office. Okay, since you got some email, I just wanted to.
I have to be in the Board Office this morning. I think if I made it quite in time, but anyway.
Yes.
This position has been open since June for a big clerk. Decided to maybe even go home, and she has another business or she's self-employed. But I have found Ashley Cole from Terrada, and she's very enthusiastic and excited about the job. She has a great background and a good education. And I'm kind of excited for her to join our team. And I'd love for her to start July 11th at $13.50 per hour. And she will also have a probationary period also. And I did not put her alone, but that's just a state.
Yes, yes. At this time, I approve the hiring through the Court Office.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the hire of Ashley Cole as Deputy Probate Clerk as a full-time position with benefits, starting date July 11th, 2022, at $13.50 per hour, with a 90-day probation probationary period. Any discussion on that?
No, other than I know she has a good leader over there too. Tammy would be.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is really well qualified to teach her all the words.
Okay. Take that to vote. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. You're welcome. I want to go take care of the next.
I'm moving to approve the minutes for May 31st, 2022.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
This time, I'm moving to be dispense with the reading of the proceedings of vacation and set them on record for June 23rd, through the 20.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings of the proceedings in vacation and enter them into record for June 23rd through June 29th, 2022. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. We have no estate settlements today. All right, we will go ahead with a new hire from the Sheriff's Office, and Sheriff Prit is not here yet. So we will continue on, and that puts us extremely early. So let's go ahead and approve the bills, and then we'll work through some of our Coordinator's Report while we wait.
At this time, we approve and pay the bills as they've been properly presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills as they have been approved, presented and approved. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. All right, care responding. I don't believe we have anything to discuss on that today. Not today. All right. And then our Coordinator's Report. Can we go ahead and just get started? I don't know, we'll make it through.
We don't have that much.
Okay, so we might make it through.
We might.
And I would point out, show up. Will you point out all the hard work that other children in making sure that the clock is working?
Keeping us on time? I always glance up there, and then I'm always looking at my watch just to make sure.
We've gotten out of the habit of counting on that one. It's going to take a while to adjust.
Right. So I think first is, yes, Hard Office Solutions. This is for the renewal of our copier leases. This is for several, including that one, one in the Commission Office, the prosecutor, two in the tax deputy's office, and one in the animal shelter. Because the two, the animal shelter and the Commission Office are below use, they're going to remain in place until the next removal. The other copiers are all going to be replaced with the newest models. I want to point out that the click rate is going to, or per copy rate will remain the same. Maintenance agreement also stays. But signing this lease, they are telling us that there is going to be about a $90 a month savings over the current contract. And that's through some incentives from Toshiba.
Is that listed in the contract, or that's just like an extra savings? That's like a plus to the contract? It's just?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Right. Yes, I did. I did see that. My question was, is that just like a coupon that comes off monthly? It's not a guarantee, or is it?
Oh, it's it's in. They calculated the lease cost with the lower rate.
Okay, perfect. Well, that's good because in this world today, everything else has gone up, so.
Not everyone else say home inflation is inflation that. And for Mr. Little to come in and say, we can save you a bit.
Save any everything we can.
I will take a bit.
Yes.
And so with that, I would ask that the President be authorized to sign the contract renewal with Hard Office Solutions.
Right. This time, I'm moving to authorize the President to sign the new lease agreement renewal for Hard Office Solutions.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the President to sign the lease agreement with Hard Office Solutions. And about who?
For $744.
It's $744, the total?
Yeah.
Okay. For $744 per month, yes.
And that's a 63-month lease.
Yes. All right, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
I did not see any budget revision email to those.
I don't know that they were emailed, they were in your drive. We do have budget revisions.
Well, I meant from anybody else. I mean.
Oh, oh, sorry, yes.
I was not clear on how I said that. I follow your.
Everything seems to be from here. We have five in total. The first is for the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority Grant, and that is to basically setting up the grant for $150,000 for the next year. So you're taking 50,000 from contributions, and with the grant, everything comes out into Contract Services for $150,000 the next year. The same with the Community Corrections Grant, which will move, leave $197,000. $100.
It's kind of odd now.
No, I haven't gotten to that one yet.
Seen that one.
Is that for the?
Oh, there it is.
That's for the increases in the office.
No, that will, that's in the next segment.
That's a different. The only one I see here for Community Corrections is for, to cover the clerk, the green clerk writing, and that's for $3,236 bucks. That's all I see for Community Corrections.
And I think that one we did last week.
Oh, opened up July 5th.
Yeah, I see one, two, three. Keep it in. Make sure we have it all, so that we don't miss anything.
Okay, there's the first one.
Okay, we've got the VOGA Budget Revision. We have Community Corrections Grant. We have.
This is.
That was the check that came in from Terry.
And we are holding off on that one.
So we're not approving that one. We also have the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority Grant.
So you have everything except this one.
And then the one for our administration.
Yes. This, this is the one we're looking for, which I thought was part of the package.
Okay, well, I didn't see it in there.
Great, wait a minute, yeah, I did. See it. Hold on. No, it should be down here. I just saw it at the bottom here. Budget Revision, VOGA.
No, that's, that's also on this list. I do not see this one in there.
It's not there. Yeah, it's not there.
The Commission Administration.
Community Corrections Grant clerk, that one?
No, that's not it either.
No, that's actually for next week.
Yeah, this should be about $100,000.
Which I was scared of. I was told I was scared of it, so.
Okay, we have a little bit. We're running early. Let's put this on hold. You can run back up to the office. We'll recess just to take care of budget revisions, and you can get all that straightened out before we approve it. So let's hold off on that, and do you have any miscellaneous correspondence?
No.
Okay. All right, straighten it up.
Well, we have.
We'll get it figured out. We just got to get it ready.
If we have to wait on it for a week, we could.
All right, 9:45, Patty Showers Ryan, York Community Foundation Matching Grant Campaign. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. I was here in April and returning again today just to touch base with the Commissioners regarding the $1 million match campaign that YCF is currently undertaking. It is our goal to try to raise and match $1 million by December 31st, 2022. This is an effort to raise what we would call unrestricted grant funds, which allows us flexibility with our grant making. So YCF serves a five-county region, which includes Preston County, and we are constantly asked for grant funds that we just simply don't have unrestricted, a lot of unrestricted dollars to be able to fund nonprofit charities. And this is for grants, not scholarships, because we do both activities. But this is actually for grant funds. And so we were approached by a donor that wishes to remain anonymous that understood that we have a difficult time raising unrestricted dollars. Most people when they give, they usually have a restriction for a certain need or purpose. And the donor said to us, if you can raise a million, I'll match a million. And it's just an amazing opportunity for York Community Foundation, North Central West Virginia, and of course, we want to be successful. So we are reaching out to lots of prospects, we'll call them. They could be individuals, they could be businesses, and of course, all the county commissions, including yourself, to ask for support of this matching campaign. Gifts of $10,000 or greater are able to create their own fund and name the fund. So for example, if the Commissioners were interested in creating funds, it would be the Preston County Impact Fund. Those dollars are invested into an endowment fund, which we do not spend that investment, but rather just the earnings every year for grant making. So this really is a long-term, sustainable type of gift that we will use forever. And what's even better is that anybody in the community can give to this fund. So, you know, if somebody had $50. Matching funds do go into our Impact Fund that's used for the entire region. So as we raise a million, we match a million. We're actually growing our funds by $2 million. So your fund would be held for Preston County, but I just want to make sure you know that the matching funds are used for the entire region for grant requests that we receive each year. I have with me today to our board member Perry DeChristopher, so I wanted to give her a moment just to say a few words as well. If I forgot something, let her add in.
I think that it's just an amazing opportunity for us. We really just didn't want to leave $1 on the table. And so that's why we were reaching out to other county governments and cities to help support that fund. And as Patty said, the Impact Fund would be spent throughout our, throughout all five counties. So it would still impact folks from Preston County that maybe make a request. And that, the impact necessary by an unrestricted fund was never more prevalent during COVID because YCF got requests from folks who needed help and things that we couldn't even predict that they might need help for. And so without unrestricted funds, lots of those requests would have gone unfunded. And I know that we helped some folks in Preston County with heating bills and with schools with cleaning, which like, who would ever thought schools would need help with cleaning materials? But, you know, during COVID, we needed to help with that. And an unrestricted fund is really for those kinds of things that we don't even know that we need in the future. And so that's why we're so hopeful that that's going to be fully funded someday, so.
I just have one question. Since the last time that you had come before us, what were, what kind of success have you had with getting to your million marks and then cash?
Well, like a $300,000 from one county.
Yeah, we're really excited to tell you that we have received a total of $660,000 so far towards our $1 million.
Okay.
Yeah, and that actually doesn't include, because I don't have that paperwork signed yet. But we have a verbal commitment for Preston County as well. And so we just, we wanted, the reason why we thought it was helpful to come back to is I'm not sure how budgeting works with the June 30th date. But we just wanted, again, if it's not the right time, it's okay. But we wanted, we knew that you were ending one fiscal year and starting another. So we just wanted to make sure to let you know, keep you updated in how we were doing with our campaign. Well, and I certainly appreciate the update. We usually don't have a lot of extra funds with our budget that we can expend, you know, just here or there, whenever. So we really hold tight till our carryover comes in to see where we're at, and then we can usually, you know, take a good look at the requests that we've had. And so certainly do appreciate the update, and it's exciting that some of the other counties are, you know, more financially set with.
Well, you're that far along.
Yes, yes, that's exciting. You've been reaching far.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive.
It's a lot of work, Patty.
Yes, it's a lot of work. And then, and then.
Of all the requests we've had, and while it's a wonderful opportunity for YCF, it's really about the organizations out there that will be the ultimate beneficiaries.
I think it's also important that the Commissioners and the public know that we're making sure when we give a grant that those nonprofits have provided an application and they, you know, they're registered with the IRS and the Secretary of State, making sure they're in compliance, and they have a budget and a board of directors. You know, all those things are really important, but, you know, we're doing our due diligence for our grant making. So I just wanted to reassure you for that.
I.
Thank you, appreciate it. Joe, do you want to? Are you? Looking for a phone, Linda?
Yes.
It was lying in the bill box. And I silenced it just in case. Funding, I continue to get calls nearly daily about the funds and when we're going to be making some decisions. And of course, we will be going into a work session today concerning that here in a little bit. So. No, I do not have anything additional to discuss today. It's the. Got a lot to discuss for the work session, but that's here in a little bit, so. All right, we will just go ahead and take a brief recess until Mr. Hogg gets back with the budget revisions first approved. We're officially recessed. Thank you all for the opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
Is this a appropriate time that you should check back?
Usually, usually after the after period. Period, we won't know until probably end of July. So obviously, usually when we have a better idea, we'll.
As the budget, we, I don't know what the carryover and how the tax receipts are going to be. And I guess, unlike a lot of other places, we obligate your revolve, and then hopefully, we've maybe been a little extra here and there in that carryover work, will give us an opportunity, which doesn't happen very often. But either, you ask us to help, and we've got a few dollars or so, or whatever it might be, so that's, that's the way to, so the carryovers.
I understand, that's very.
Good, thank you. Thanks for your persistence.
Thank you all. We're going to keep working in the meantime.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Are you here? You made it? We're recessed, so just take, so don't take a breath. We're recessed, and we can. Well, I'm going to sit here and sound, don't let her catch her breath for a second. Wait on Joe. We had to recess because he needed to go get.
Guess they figured he'd change you guys' minds or something.
I was just getting ready to text Mo and be like, are you telling me?
Yeah. I was, I got busy at the office, and I went to Kirsty. She said, I said, I'm going to make a change maybe. She slipped her numbers. She said, what time is it? I said, 9:51, and she said, what time was your appointment? I said, 9:40.
You'll have that someday, it's not.
Yeah. Especially after I was off two days last week.
Well, and then you come back. You come back Monday to prepare for your Tuesday.
Yeah. You spend your weekend in Rayfield?
We actually did a lot of that last week. And we actually camped on this weekend, which was awkward. Not because of the camping, but where we went. And so literally, we were unplugged, and we drove. Saturday night to see fireworks. And then it poor drained the candles. So I got just like three minutes of open service, and then back out. And then again, on Sunday, we drove back. And so you just glance through, make sure there's kind of like emergency stuff, and then. People's. I told Kevin, I believe we should start a family tradition of unplugging, like being able to like unplug 2023, the kids were. And my mom doesn't understand, like, the kids use that, a map trap. And they, they're called streaks. So all our little friends, every day, they have these streaks, and they do nothing but take a picture of the ceiling or the floor or driving down the road and send it, and it keeps log of their streaks with their friends. And my mom's like, Caleb, did you get your slap caught and dated? Or she didn't know what it was. She thought it was slaps. So we used to have this little running joke now that slaps got slapped. So it's just odd to, people are very used to getting back to their messages and their emails. And I was like, oh, I shouldn't have self-concerned. It felt like you lost everything, and we worked on that long, you know? We didn't live down here until super late. Probably. 340 emails this morning. Yeah. Because I didn't look at them last week. That's a ton of emails. I know, I was right there, and I spent a good bit of time catching up when I got back into the service line.
Yeah, it's nice being out, but then playing catch-up.
Everyone's got us good to do that.
Catch your breath. You're talking.
More exercise on this job than I did. Be there. That's part of the.
Well, and if you operate anything like Kathy, your heart's going to be a little faster too. It'll get you broken. We'll see how high you can jump.
There was one good place.
Okay.
It's Keystone.
Okay, this is, this is just the Keystone?
Yes.
Okay. I looked for another place, but I didn't see it, so I dismissed it. All right, we will officially come back into session and continue with approving our budget revisions.
And now, hopefully, you're all on the same page.
All right. I want to thank you. You just wanted to do a brief rundown of what these budget revisions are for?
Sure.
Perfect.
So again, we have the courthouse facilities improvement grant, means one fifty. Now, on the second page, there should be community corrections, yeah, grant that we're throwing in, that will be for even two hundred thousand. And then you have the VOGA for through September. Then we have two of the salary adjustments. The first is for adjusting for the new coordinator and facilities manager, and also adding for the extra help that we're expecting through the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And then on the last page, there are the elective official increases.
Okay. All right, so.
So at that, I would ask that we be authorized to approve the budget revisions.
And we have no other budget revisions, right, Linda, you have nothing? Okay. All right.
All right, this time I move that we approve the budget revisions as they've been presented to us.
Properly moved and seconded to authorize and approve these budget revisions as they are, have been presented to us. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Yes. These are just the originals, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for taking care of that. All right, Melissa, if you would like to come over.
Last week, Sheriff Prit got your advice consent to hire a new employee. His starting date, when we presented that, was originally requested for July one. He was here on the twenty-eighth and went ahead and began his training process.
Okay.
So we'd like to change his hire date to the twenty-eighth, so he can get paid for those days that he was here and not training. And this is, I mean, the urgency was just the lack of the people that we are down.
Yeah.
We're just trying to get him in there, and so we can get started, because right now, we only have one person that can train for a week.
Linda, is there anything special we need to do to adjust that? No, what she's doing right now is taken care of. Okay.
I think I'll talk to him first.
But I just wanted to be sure, I just wanted to be sure. Okay.
Is that, is that, not, not a vote needed to change it?
There is a vote needed.
We need to authorize the adjusting of the start date to the twenty eighth of July.
That's all, that's all, yeah. All right, this time I move that we authorize the adjustment of this employee's start date to June twenty-eighth, correct?
And it's, what was his first name? I apologize.
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey McElroy, okay. Did you second that?
I will.
Okay.
Now.
If you would like.
Sure.
Okay, so it's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the change of the start date from July first, two thousand twenty-two to June twenty-eight, two thousand two, for Jeffrey McElroy, for the Sheriff's Department. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, do we have any other things that we need to discuss in our regular session?
None at this time.
Anybody else have any other comments? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you. We have. Crazy. Yes.
Nothing else you can do at all?
And I would like to get this done before we actually go into the session. All right, so I have time to wrap up the bills here before we start on that.